Twenty twenty five is now called to order, please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Law nineteen seventy five, chapters two, three, one. This agenda is complete to the extent known it was sent to the Trenton Times and Trentonia newspapers, posted on the first floor bulletin board in City Hall, filed in the city clerk's office and posted on the city of Trenton website. Formal action will be taken. Roll call. Vice President Edwards. Councilwoman Feliciano. Councilwoman Figueroa Kenbury. Councilwoman Frisbee. Councilman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams. Council President Gonzalez. Myself, Brandon Garcia Municipal Clerk present. Mister Edward Colagi Legislative Counsel.
Present.
And for Westbrook is Mister Palmer Richardson.
Thank you. And Madam President, if you'd like at this time, I'll read the invocation. Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen. And Madam President, it's my understanding that we have a presentation this evening. Um, this is, if you want to introduce that, go right ahead.
Yeah, I think your presentation, um, it says, um, I was gonna have EA Richardson be one of them. And then I just wanted to put the things that it's called, the people that are interested.
Uh, no. Yes, we, we, there are other people and we will offer the same opportunity to other interested parties. Uh, we have three other individuals. So yes, we, uh, administration has received, um, a proposal presented by Tetra Build Development Corporation. They have presented to, um, administration and we thought that it was feasible to bring before the full body. Um, and so this evening they are here to, to do their presentation.
Look, uh, Brandon, if, are you able to, um?
Get Council President?
Here is for not to repeat. Are you able to mute the TV? Colin, why don't you try muting the TV? So that we don't hear the, the backup from the TV?
Yes. Um, no, no, not really. So this is the first, um, but some people have expressed interest, but this is the first, uh, entity that has actually produced a, uh, documentation and that we have been able to follow up with their interest. However, we are planning with the authorization of Council President to bring every single interested party to the body. But this is a risk that every developer will take. I figure that everybody will present, uh, something that is really, uh, unique to them. And so it would probably be up to them if they are willing to let their plans be, you know, known by other redevelopers. Um, I think that at this time, it would be basically to present what their objectives are. And they probably can correct me if I give the wrong information. But I think that because we are willing to move this process, not necessarily with this redeveloper, right? But we would like for the council to be aware of what, uh, are the proposals that we are receiving? And what are their asks as well? So I don't want to come back later and surprise the council with, uh, a decision. Remember that you are the redevelopment entity and that you should be aware of the applications and the interest that we are receiving.
Right, are, go ahead, are you, uh, go ahead, I'll let you finish.
Since nobody else submitted it, it's going to be then they're just saying.
So that's what I was gonna ask. This is true. However, I was gonna ask, was, what was the deadline for the, um?
There is really not a deadline. Uh, we, um, put an RFP out and we are trying to, we will pick or council will pick what I hope is the best for the city. But you need to, to be aware of what those proposals are. At the beginning, we requested this meeting as an executive session precisely not to give out, right? Too much details about this proposal, but legal didn't think that that was appropriate because there is no litigation, it's not a personnel issue, it's not a settlement or anything like that. But they thought that it needed to be a public meeting. Otherwise, we would have to present it to just the subcommittee. But we thought that, given the fact that we want to move, and I know that that is the desire of the council to move ahead with the process of, uh, purchasing and selling the hotel and seeing a vibrant, uh, hopefully a vibrant hotel in downtown, that it was, the time was of the essence to do these presentations before council.
Thank you, um, BA Richardson. Um, I think Councilwoman Frisbee wanted to have a question.
So BA Richardson, how long ago did we put the, um, RFP out?
Oh goodness, that was about three, four months ago.
And this is the?
And we have, some, uh, individuals have expressed interest, they have visited the facility. Um, but we haven't received a formal interest like this group that is here today. We've received one additional, um, proposal and we are in the due diligence process. With this group, we actually asked for additional information, a lot of additional information. And we are in the process of doing the same with the other group that sent us a proposal.
So with that, then I, my response, um, response, Council President is I respectfully request that we go ahead with hearing them. I think out of respect for their time and what they put together, how they prepared to be here. Uh, I would not want to waste their time. I think it would be, um, advantageous for us to just go ahead and hear what they have just out of respect for the preparation.
No, I definitely agree with that. Thank you. Um, I was just gonna suggest too, yes.
I, I agree. I saw that there were other documents.
Me too, me too. So this is the only group that has submitted?
Correct.
Yeah, no, I, I definitely agree too. I thought there were other people that submitted. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to make sure for, uh, public dissemination. Um, this developer, uh, was able to obtain exclusivity on the project? That is correct?
Exclusivity?
As far as a certain number of months to review everything and so forth, or is that not the case?
No, we are not giving exclusivity to anybody. Actually, the council will have to pick the, the redeveloper, not administration, right? So everybody can submit a proposal. The proposal period is not closed, so we are still receiving proposals. Obviously, it's to our best interest to move ahead with this pro, with this project as soon as possible, given that we found the correct redevelopers. So this is just to keep you informed, uh, and for you to make a decision when it is appropriate for you to make a decision.
So my other question was, because there's, uh, conjecture out there in the public that there was exclusivity or some, uh, developers who would be considered developed, serious developers weren't able to obtain access to seeing the property. Is that the case? Yes or no?
Uh, we are still, if any redeveloper ask, uh, to see the property, we are open to show them the property.
Okay, thank you very, I just wanted to make sure because, um, we want to make the, uh, from the administration standpoint, our standpoint, that the process has been clean and clear. Thank you ma'am. Thank you, Council President.
No problem. So just really quickly, um, because you just said we're still receiving proposals. So we are still receiving, there are other proposals that, that?
We received one additional proposal and we are in the process, our attorneys are in the process of asking for additional information. We, we want, uh, to ask the same information to everybody. So the same process that we follow with the individuals here tonight of asking them the objectives for their redevelopment project, um, their experience, what projects they have been completed, what projects they are working on. We are doing the same thing with the second, uh, interested in the party. And we will do the same with any other that comes to the table.
Right. Um, thank you, BA Richardson. My only, my only concern was that I would just wanted to, like, if we had, like, if we're gonna set a deadline, right? So this is me thinking fairness, if we're going to set, like, August first is the deadline and all of those submissions would be heard all at one time, just so that we're not gonna keep having special meetings or, you know, different meetings for, for just the hotel?
No, um, in this case, we wanted to bring this before you and because the next meeting is gonna be, um, on Tu, on July first, right? But we could, we wanted to do it, uh, faster than that, right? Than July first to accommodate any other potential, uh, interested redevelopers in the future. But it is up to council really until one, you want to continue to see proposals. We, we will bring them to the table, to the subcommittee, um, on a timely manner. And you will decide when you to have, when you would like to have it on the docket or when you would like to have the presentation.
Okay, Councilwoman Frisbee?
So thank you. Uh, Madam President, that actually was part of, um, my question is about a, uh, a cutoff date, which I think that we should have three to four months is a long period of time to have put out a RFP. If we have at least one more, um, interested party and they're in the works, um, and have expressed interest and have submitted paperwork, um, for the sake of getting things in motion and not keep putting us, um, as a city on the back burner, um, and waiting for everybody else and doing it on their time. Um, I request that we submit, we give a deadline so that we are not waiting till August, till September.
We could do that. If, so if you, if the council president would like to do so, I can discuss that with the subcommittee with, uh, in our next meeting so that we can determine a deadline for the proposals. If that is okay with you. If not, this is something that we can decide today. You can tell me.
So just, just for me, because I'm, just from my understanding, I thought we did have a, a deadline like prior to this?
Not to my knowledge. I don't think that we do have a deadline because of the nature of this project. We really need somebody that has the experience, the money, and that is going to present us with a, a good proposal. So we were not, we knew that this was not gonna be an easy process. So we didn't, we didn't put, I don't think that we put a deadline, but I can check.
Count, Councilwoman Williams?
I'd just like to propose ma'am, um, that we set a deadline of either September fifteenth or, uh, our first or second council meeting in the month of September. So, uh, this summer could be utilized for, uh, taking any additional application if there are any. And if there are not, that's an appreciable amount of time for people to, developers to have visited the property, submitted what they want to submit for an RFP. And if there are no others, that's fine. If there are some, then that's more, you know, more to consider. But I think that would be setting a deadline and giving people an appropriate amount of time to do what they should be doing for their diligence.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I agree, we should set a deadline. Um, I would suggest like August before September so we can get it rolling. Um.
So August thirtieth, you say?
Yes, I didn't suggest August since we only have one meeting in case we need to take action.
Right, but that's what I mean, the deadline would be August, so we wouldn't?
It was actually, um, um, attorney Julie Murray just, um, taught me that it was a rolling deadline. If you, if we, if you like the proposal that you hear today, we don't need to wait for anybody else. If you don't like it and you, you know, we present the second proposal and you like that one, you know, you can go for that one. It's, it's up to you entirely. And so you can set the deadline for whenever you want, as long as we have the right redeveloper and, uh, and we just go for it. But that is your, that is up to the council.
Yeah, I would like to set a deadline, but two, I do, I still want to hear them, their proposal tonight. Because like we say, out of respect for their time, we definitely want them to come in and, you know, present, if they're willing to still present.
So it's August thirtieth, a, that is feasible for everybody in the council?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that, yes.
And so why, why are we waiting till August instead of like July thirty first? I think, I don't think we, I don't think we need to wait until August. I think?
I'm okay with it. I just want a deadline. I think we need a deadline.
If we're gonna do this, I think July thirty first is okay. Then that way we could be geared up for when we meet in August to, to do, you know what I mean? And then you can even have them present, if you'd like, at the council meeting, right? So we don't even have to have a special meeting, just have them queued up and ready to go. Because they've had ample time, um, to prepare people, we're gonna prepare something for us. And I don't wanna, you know what I mean? Like, we, we hear things, we may like what we hear now, we're extending things out again.
Right, no, I, I, I'm okay with July. Were you gonna say something?
Yes, I'd like to. So I was, I'm sorry, you go ahead. I didn't see it.
Thank you. So I, again, I, I'm in agreement with Councilwoman Feliciano. I don't think that we should prolong this. Um, again, if it's been three to four months that this has been out, why are we waiting for others to give their terms? So, um, if we put, put this out there, take us seriously.
Well, to be honest with you, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, it's, you know, it has been open for this long because we haven't received a serious proposal until now. So the idea is to find a serious redeveloper to take this project to the end, not just to put the proposal out. So until we actually get to that point, we should have the proposal out. Seems like now we have two serious proposals that the council will give consideration to. So it is up to you. If you want to close it, we can close it tomorrow.
That, that's where I'm going with this. But I'm, my, again, three to four months is a long time that we've had this open. We're just getting the second proposal now. I think we should just cut it. I think that if we have two, that we feel that viable, um, candidates, that we should go with that, go with those two and hear what they have to say and then move from there. I don't think that we should keep prolonging it and giving others the opportunity to pro, to actually prolong it even more. Because that's what it's gonna do is keep pushing us back and pushing us back. So we have one, we have another one that you said that you're, you're reviewing and will be submitting to us. I think three to four months is long enough. That's my two and a half cents on that.
Thank you.
So I hear that you want to close it by July thirty first?
Classic July thirty first. I'm allowed, Councilwoman Williams to say?
Thank you. Um, I don't, while in spirit, I, I don't necessarily disagree that we need to cut this off in July thirty first. The reason I suggested that we do go through the month of August is tonight we're at a special meeting for a special presentation. And for us to make a deliberate decision on this, which there's been an appreciable amount of time since we had a press conference in freezing cold weather, uh, in front of the hotel.
Right.
This is a decision that, you know, started back in two thousands for a fifty-four million dollar hotel that was bonded upon which we still owe with two point whatever million dollars, uh, that has to be retired. I would just like to suggest being that today's July twenty fourth, taking an extra thirty days or so, ain't gonna hurt anybody. June, thank you, June twenty, I wanna, gosh, oh my gosh, summer would be almost over. Uh, June twenty fourth, that taking an extra month, that's not gonna hurt anybody, but it gives us a chance to be very deliberate, um, with this decision, but also making sure, once this decision is done, it's a solid decision, it's a final decision. And no one shall, should complain that, uh, they didn't get a shot at the apple. But that's just my opinion, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, Councilman Harrison and then Council Vice President?
Uh, my question is, the second proposal, what's the timeline for that?
Um, I don't know. They sent, um, they sent information. We requested additional information. Uh, we are waiting, we are, our attorneys, um, are asking the questions and we are waiting for a response from the redeveloper. But we don't, I don't have that information.
We don't have that information?
No.
How about err on the caution of August, actually? Because until we have this worked out with the second proposal, I always think it was better off and less to have more options. Right now, we have?
Well, you know, with, with this process, you can actually listen to this presentation tonight and decide that this is the right developer for you.
Correct.
Right? And then that's it. You go with this and, and we move ahead. You might decide that you don't like it and you want to see the second proposal. It's up to you. There is nothing that would limit you except that, you know, we are trying to, to have a vibrant hotel in downtown and that we are, we want to move ahead with that. Remembering that next year is the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the nation and that we should have something in downtown to accommodate the guests that we are expecting to have, right? So if this is the redeveloper, then it's up to the council to decide, yes, we go ahead with this one. If not, we go to the next. And if not, we hope that we get three, ten more good proposals. Um, but this is just a process that we need to go through.
Thank you. Uh, Council Vice President?
Thank you. Um, I just wanna say that, um, I do appreciate all the conversation and dialogue. Um, there wasn't a deadline to, um, BA Richardson's point because of the difficulty in the whole entire process. It was difficult to set a deadline. Um, this has been going on for a long time. Yes, the RFP had went out a few months ago, but people have been actively trying to buy the hotel for years. So those that are interested have definitely stepped up to the plate. And for those that presented a proposal or a letter of intent, I think it's fair to say, let's hear them out tonight. Let's get through this. We are not voting on this tonight. We're just hearing them out. And then we can make a collective decision later down the line on whether we want to provide more time to allow the second offer to submit a full proposal. And if not, then, you know, you snooze, you lose. Don't wanna say it like that, but we have to move forward. This hotel has been vacant for a very long time. And the longer it's there, the worse it's going to get for all of us. So for the sake of time, because we've been talking about this for twenty minutes, let's hear the proposal, make a decision later and set a deadline, because I do agree with the deadline for July thirty first. And then that gives time. If they need to, if there is another proposal. So let's just respect everybody's time. We're here. Let's move forward.
No, so?
Council President?
Uh, BA Richardson, yes.
Um, and, and just for clarity, what you are going to listen to today is a concept, right? They are not going to be presenting you with the design or any of that matter, but just with the concept and the objectives of their proposal, what they are trying to do, right? And so that's, that's just for, just for clarity for the council.
No, thank you. So yeah, I agree with us listening to them and then we can set a deadline, um, after. But if you want to introduce them, you're more than welcome to?
Yes, I am just actually gonna call them to?
Just real quick.
To the podium.
Just real quick, I just wanted to say, um, with, given the time that has been and the matter of going back and forth, um, with ownership and everything that the city is looking to accomplish, I do think that time is of the essence and we do need to hear, to listen, you know, decide exactly how we wanna go. If it works out, it works out, right? To everyone's point. If it doesn't work out, then we move to the next. But the deadline of the seven thirty one, I think is fair, especially if you all have your questions and stuff in queue already for the second person that's interested, just step it up and tell them, they need to turn in what they need to turn in. We have a deadline and we're moving in that order. If they're serious, they're gonna have it. And if they're not, then they won't.
I agree. Thank you. Um, so we can move forward with the presentation, BA.
Thank you. Um, Mister AJ, if you could please come up and your? The principals. Um, he is in the?
Hey, everybody. How are y'all?
Good evening.
Do I need to state my name for the record?
Yes, please.
Okay, my name, uh, my full name is Adrian Jackbelth the third. I go by AJ, nice and simple. Uh, live in Charlotte, North Carolina. Our office is in Greenville, South Carolina. Um, my colleague, where did he go? Oh, right there, is Chris Cheeseborough. Um, we'll talk about, um, his role in the company. Um, everything that I was going to talk about tonight has kind of gone out the window. Um, we have every intent to come into Trenton to improve this gem, what we view as a gem for you community. This is what we do. We're hospitality based. Um, and I'd like to just go through, I listened to everybody on the council and thank you for your time today. Um, listened to the objections and just want you to know that when we were first made aware of this opportunity, I think it was back in April or so, uh, we got a whole team, uh, on site. And that's, um, construction team, actually, uh, director of construction, plus we have a partner who's a national GC. So he was on site. Two of the principals have a rich, a rich and deep history in hospitality space. I'm just a real estate developer and, uh, I've been in a lot of different asset classes and I got involved in hospitality, actually back in two thousand sixteen with a historical building. And as I walk into this room, by the way, this is gorgeous. Uh, we love historical buildings and, and this room is truly spectacular. Uh, I'd like to share with you with where we're at, at this point. Um, again, we came in April, I believe, we submitted a letter of intent on, I think, May twentieth. There's a lot to do at the hotel. First of all, the exterior is in great shape. Uh, the bones of it are very, very good. Inside, if you've been through there, it's, it's a mess. Um, and it needs a lot of work. There's been a lot of theft, uh, in there, i.e. switchgear. Uh, there's, there's a lot of expensive things that we need to replace in that hotel. But we're, we're, we've job costed it. We're ready to go. A little bit about my, my company, Tetra Build. Um, there are four primary principals, um, and then one minor principal. Um, I'm the managing member of Tetra Build Development Company. And again, my background is real estate development and capital markets. I used to run a publicly traded company. The, Chris is on the operations side. He's actually second generation. Um, his father worked at Marriott for his entire career. And Chris, uh, although his father told him never to do hospitality, he didn't listen to him. And, uh, he's been in the hospitality space his entire career and I'll let him talk about the operations side. Um, Phil Hugh is one of the principals involved in Tetra Build. Phil has forgotten, uh, has forgotten, uh, everything I know about hospitality. He is an expert in the field. He's been doing it since he was seventeen years old. So he's, we've got a rich and deep, um, history in hospitality and experience and contacts. Um, and from the standpoint of what we need to do with Trenton, we've done it before. And by the way, I'm, I'm gonna touch on a few points that people said, there was no exclusivity. This was an open playing field and we don't mind competition at all. As a matter of fact, every deal we ever do is competitive. And so we'll put up our wares to anybody. So just wanted to set the record straight on that. And, and I think that we responded in very quick fashion to not only get a letter of intent in, but that letter of intent was based upon job costing for the improvement of this hotel. And just to let you know, the cost estimate is about twenty-five million dollars. And that's broken down into hard costs for all of the interior work that needs to be done. Um, FFNE furniture, fixtures and equipment, which is a major expense. Um, soft costs for non-financing, design fees, soft costs like legal and et cetera, engineering, and then of course financing fees. And we feel very comfortable with that number and we're, and we felt comfortable enough to go forward with the LOI based upon our initial job costing. We did have a set of plans. based upon our initial job costing. We did have a set of plans that we can go to. Basically, it's, it's touch and feel. When you go through these buildings, we've been, we've done it enough to know what it's going to cost. So from that standpoint, we really have to pick on configuration. This hotel is similar to a lot of the ones that we've renovated. Right now, it's 197 keys, transient rooms. It's too many transient rooms. What we want to do is reduce the number of transient rooms and provide extended stay rooms for those, for those state officials or visitors that want a week's stay, a month's stay, a six-month's stay. Let's tap into that demand driver and provide extended stay suites in this hotel. So we're going to reduce the key count from 197 to 170. I can't remember the exact makeup of the transient versus the extended stay, but I think it's 36, 36 upscale extended stay suites and the balance transient. The, the event space, when I walked through it, was much more grandiose than I, I picked up on the plans. I view that as an incredible opportunity for programming. And from what I understand, the event programming here in Trenton is limited, at least in capacity. That event space can accommodate 600, 700 people. So it really opens up opportunities for a lot more events. And, and I want to talk a little bit about another company that I created as an answer to the food and beverage component within a hotel, if I may. I developed a hotel in Alpharetta, Georgia. It's called the Hamilton Curio. We finished it in December of 2021. It is, we, we put 119 keys, 16,000 square feet of retail and amenity deck and a parking deck on .75 acres of land, new build. This was in collaboration with City of Alpharetta, which is just north of Atlanta. And this was the finishing touch to their vision of city center. So we did that. And when we created the amenity deck, because of the pitch of the land, we had 9,000 square feet of effectively basement space. Like, what do you do with that? And so we threw around a bunch of ideas, spa, some other uses. And I called a friend of mine up that I'd done a lot of business with and I said, I've got this crazy idea. I'd like for you to creativity and come up with a concept, something that's attractive to the hotel as an amenity, but also attractive to the community. So if you go on the website, you'll see the Hamilton Curio, you'll go on that. And then I'd like for you to look under the website, COSO Ventures, C-O-S-O Ventures, which is Competitive Social Ventures. And the origin of that was this 9,000 square feet of space in the basement of a hotel. Again, no windows, stairs going down, accessible from the lobby elevator. We came up, I, I told my buddy Neil Freeman, I said, I'm thinking about a speakeasy. What are your thoughts? 9,000 square feet is a big speakeasy. So he, he creatively came up with an idea and created Roaring Social, which two-thirds of it is a speakeasy concept, very heavy, music-driven, food and beverage, mostly beverage, but that typical kind of lounge that you feel in a, in a speakeasy setting. On the backside, through some creative separation buffers, we created duck pen bowling, because duck pen bowling back in the 20s was very popular. You don't have, and then we created a Babe Ruth room. And we have the rights to Babe Ruth's name because of, we contacted the family members and their apartment owner in that particular venue. So put it together, came up with this concept of the roaring 20s and with the faux door and whatnot. And we thought, as developers of a hotel, that, you know, if we can do 2 million of top line revenue in this place, then that's a win. The first year we did 3.6 million of top line revenue. It was incredible. We thought maybe it's going to be trendy and maybe people won't come back. Well, the second year, we did 4.1 million in that venue. And the last year, we did 4.3 or 4.4 million. So what we discovered was, not only was it an incredible amenity for the hotel, it was great for the community and it was really attractive and repetitive, repetitive business. The reason I bring that up is that we developed another retail center down the road and we created another concept with golf simulators, much like Topgolf, but inside. So we were adapting that particular use to that particular development that we created. So we, as developers, were very creative. We came up with businesses that we thought would be appealing to the community. And then we have a pickle, pickleball concept. I don't see that happening here with what we've got, but you know, we're creative. But we have those three concepts and, and what we're doing now is we're taking down large, I would, I would say quasi obsolete hotels at this point. Big boxes, 300 keys, big event space, big F and B. And what we're doing is we're tying the CSV team, which is specializes in experiential food and beverage. And we want to do the same thing to Trenton as we're doing with a bunch of other hotels that we're acquiring. So if we're fortunate enough to be awarded this, this contract, the CSV team will come in here, the whole team, and they'll, they're going to study the fabric of Trenton, the, the history. You know, what do Trentonians like? Do they like music? Do they like sports? What, what is their feature? And then create the concept to match for the community. That's what we're doing. And that's different from anybody that, that I know in the hospitality space. And it was really the creation from that one hotel that we did in Alpharetta. And we think we've got something pretty special here and that's what we plan on doing. So before I hand it over to Chris and he can talk about the operations side, very important fact, I'm capital markets. The capital markets have been extraordinarily difficult to finance hotels in the last two to three years, very, very difficult. I'm happy to say, through some relationships that we've created and, and we're, we have a fund that is actually acquiring six assets for us that close on July 15th for $75 million. And we're going to create those concepts that I talked about. And they also have provided a comfort letter for financing, which I believe is being passed around. So we are, we are fully funded. We are ready to go. We've got a contractor team that basically said, as soon as this is, this is closed, you're going to see dumpsters out there and you're going to see backhoes in there and we're going to start demoing and get it down to, to the skin and then rebuilding it inside. So I heard from the mayor and I heard from several other people here in Trenton that this anniversary, it's a big anniversary, 250 years. I'm a history buff, so I know there was a lot of stuff going on here in Trenton back in the Revolutionary War. But we want to get this, this hotel open in time for that. Our development timeline is around 12 months. So, you know, you can work your way backwards, but if we want to get open and operating by Q3, Q4 of '26, we're going to have to get moving on it. It's, it's a, it's a big lift, but we're very, very comfortable with it. I do want to introduce Chris to the group. And when I developed that hotel in 2016 in Winston-Salem, North Carolina, which is a Hotel Indigo, that's the historical building, we put a third-party manager into that hotel and I learned that was a big mistake. I realized that the incentive behind a hotel manager is not necessarily the same incentive as, as an owner. And with an owner, we have shareholders. So we're, we're answered, we have to answer to shareholders. And so we got, ultimately got rid of those third-party operators. And I met Chris on a deal. We renovated a deal in Tallahassee, Florida. I met him. He brought the owner for this asset. I got to know about his company, operating company. And I said, Chris, I'd like to talk to you about buying into your company. And we transacted and now officially Millennium Management is a subsidiary, if you will, of TetraBilt Development Company. So we do have all disciplines covered, but I can't stress enough the importance that you can have the best location in the world and you can do the grandest job and get the right brand and, and all this. But if you have a bad operator, you're going to fail, just flat out. Because I thought it was just another real estate deal. I didn't realize the hotel was a business. And it's very, it's critically important that you have the right operator. And when it's organic, when it's internal, we have a great deal of confidence. So Chris, on that note, I'd like to just, if you wouldn't mind sharing your history. Like I said, you've got the expertise in operations, so I'll give you the floor and I'll stay up here if you have any other questions.
No pressure from that, by the way. Thank you. It's an honor and a privilege to be here with you. Thank you for taking time out of your schedule to meet with us and spend time with us. As AJ said, I'm a second-generation hotelier. I grew up in this business. My first foray in the hospitality industry was during a hurricane in New Orleans. I was five years old, walking around, making sure everybody at the tables, that we're in the banquet room, everybody sheltering in was making sure they were okay. Always told my father I'd never get in this business. 35 some odd years later, I'm aging myself, here I am. Started out in the industry, like I said, as a five-year-old, worked my way through, built a lot of companies for a lot of people. And then finally said, you know what? I've had enough. And started Millennium Hospitality Management Group. It was myself and my wife. My wife is also in the business. She now has the harder job of taking care of our twins and the house and everything else. But we started with two hotels and we've grown from there. If you look at our website, it's built, it says our tagline is "old school hospitality with a modern flair." We've forgotten where we've come from in the hospitality world. We've forgotten what we've all about. I mean, I see this beautiful hotel that you have and I understand the history of it and what went wrong. And that's because they didn't understand what they were doing. They didn't understand what they had in front of them. It's all about hospitality. AJ says about, you know, large hotel companies, third-party management companies, they have thousands of hotels. Oh my God, they're going to know what they're going to do. Every single one of my hotels is a hotel that I've pulled from another, from a large management company and have turned them around completely and put them in a position where they are award-winning hotels, top of their brand, et cetera, et cetera. You know, from, from the hospitality standpoint in this property, you know, you, you guys have a gem here. It has to be done right. It has to be incorporated as a part of the community, as part of the Trentonian community. You have a lot of people that come here. Where are they staying? They're staying outside, right? You have a lot of Trentonians. Where do they want to stay? They're going to stay outside because there's nothing here, right? So what do we need to do? We need to bring them here. We need to bring everybody here and bring it as part of the community and being a part of everything that goes on. AJ and I have, you know, we've done a lot together in a short period of time. I've probably developed, renovated and constructed, new build construct. I don't know, I lost track about 20 hotels. I've gone through in my career, I've had hotels from Canada all the way down to Florida and every brand there is, we've, we've worked with. And so, you know, we're, we're privileged and honored to be here and to be a part of you. I could go on and on about hospitality because it's a passion for me and it's a passion for our company. But that's kind of who we are and.
Thanks, Chris. And I'd really love to listen to y'all and if you have any questions.
Yes, thank you so much.
And I will say one thing that I didn't mention, as far as flagging and our branding. You know, Marriott, Hilton, Hyatt, IHG, there's a whole host of, of, of brands that we've considered. We want to make sure it's the best one for Trenton. We have connectivity with all of them, so that's not an issue. The good tip is, AOP is area of protection. There's not an AOP issue here because of the lack of supply. So I'm, I'm more than happy, again, this is my first council meeting in Trenton, so I don't know how I'm doing. But if you have any questions, more than happy to stay up here or sit down, however y'all want.
You can stay there. Thank you so much, first of all, for one, choosing Trenton to bring a, submit your proposal for us. But I want to open it up. I know my colleagues have some questions. I saw Councilwoman Figaro with Kattonburg, Councilwoman Frisbee, then we'll move on.
Thank you so much for coming here, for presenting, for seeing a vision for our city. As you know, that hotel has been sitting, it's been through its ups and downs and, you know, it's in dire need of rehabilitation and renovation, et cetera. My question is, like, what, what can you tell me about the Trenton market? And like, what do you propose to, what, what will this hotel bring in your vision to bring people to the city of Trenton to want to visit this hotel, to want to stay in this hotel? And, and how will it cater to the people who are already here?
Great question. Number one, there is scarcity here. So it's to provide something, a nice quality experience for the customer. There are some self-evident economic drivers here already. It is state capital. What I've, what, I'll, I'll tout Chris again that when you take over a hotel, you're normally dealing with a lot of competition. So you have to go out with a DOS, a Director of Sales and a whole sales team and revenue management to go after all the businesses proactively. So I think that there are going to be a natural course of, you know, events, just because there's been this pent-up demand and, and, and we're going to provide a very attractive facility to attract the, those events and that programming. But he's going to fill in the gaps. It's 365 days a year. If you're full 180 and you're, don't have any occupancy, the rest, you're in trouble. So you got to fill those rooms and you got to fill it with programming. That's the key. The other part, back to that Competitive Social Ventures, is CSV, to be able to come up with not just another, you've all been there, another hotel restaurant, which is boring and, you know, not a whole lot of selection. We want to create an experience and that's what we're going to do with Competitive Social Ventures. And I think, I, I know that we're going to bring people here just because of the attraction of the F and B side of it. And I, I think with the size of the hotel and the different nooks and crannies in that hotel, I think we can create several concepts in the hotel. And I think that it'll, it'll bring people back.
Thank you. And, you know, as opposed to other metropolitan cities who do have thriving downtown and entertainment districts, we don't have that at this point. So anybody coming into the city to redevelop that hotel would have to have interpersonal relationships with some of our businesses so that, you know, we can build up our downtown because it has to be inter, you know, intertwined in order for it to work. Do you have any ideas on how you could plan to do that? Do you have any experience with that particular capacity? Because you're coming into a rather desolate downtown area and we want to, you know, bring the bustle.
We want to absolutely collaborate with the business owners in this town. Because the business owners, the more people that are involved in the process, the more successful this hotel will be on its own, but also for the community. So the, one of the first things that we will do is we're going to meet with community leaders and talk to them about how can we, what are you missing? How can, how can we help fill those gaps? Perfect example, Winston-Salem, North Carolina. I don't know if you've been there. Winston-Salem, North Carolina. That was that hotel, the historical hotel, 2016. And, and it was, it was a fairly dead downtown. There was a fair amount of crime, but they had some great economic drivers. They had Wake Forest University that's not right next to it, but it's a driver. But they have medical research and instrumentation that was built on the east side of Winston-Salem. And it's really just tapping into that. And over time, the community has, has built up and those concerns that were very severe seven to 10 years ago, they're, they're pretty much gone. And we're actually enhancing the Hotel Indigo. We're actually creating some more extended stay with some land that we own around it. So we're, we're all in. We, we invest in the long term. But you're right. It is, it is, we, we've got to get involved with the community, the leaders in the community and get guidance from them. And, and we're pretty good at that.
Thank you so much. Should you be awarded this contract? You definitely have your work cut out for you, so best of luck.
You should see some of these other deals we do. This is, you've, 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 you've got a gem here. You really do. And it's just, you got to get the right players involved and just, you know, bring the community in. This is a community deal.
Thank you. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Thank you, Council President. So I want to thank you and Chris for coming and presenting on this evening and acknowledging that there is an urgency here in our community. This is something that has been long, long overdue. And we really do want to get this done, especially for our 250th. One of the things you kind of touched on, but like, one of the questions I had here was the timeline. If we say you were awarded this contract, let's say on July 31st, how soon would we see our trucks out there and everyone, whatever, how long does that process take?
One of the things that we talked. Um, one of the things that we talked to the mayor about was to expedite the demolition permit. So that's the first thing that we do. Um, and we can mobilize. Once we know when the closing date is, we can get our, our group ready to go. So I don't wanna be dramatic and say the next day, but I'm, I would say within a week, you're gonna see dumpsters and you're gonna see what's going on because we can get ahead of it. We can pull a demolition permit early before closing and get our, our, our team in there and doing what they need to do. There's a, there's a, there's a ton of cleanup. Um, but it's not, it's not as, when, if you, if you haven't done this before, uh, it can be daunting when you walk in there, but it's not a big lift. Uh, but the bottom line is, is we can get going very, very quickly once we're awarded. And we'll get working on the plans. The good news is we're staying within the envelope. When I, and what I mean by that, we're not clearly not exchanging the exterior, but we're staying within the envelope of the layout. It's a good layout. We can work with that. And the only renovations that we're gonna be doing to the rooms is taking some of the transient rooms, combining them and creating extended stay suites. So it's not, it's not very difficult. We've got, there's some serious electrical, mechanical and plumbing to a certain extent. That MEP is the major crux of the issue. And we already have our arms around it and, uh, we, we are ready to go. So development timeline, if we were to start, say, mid-August, our development timeline is about twelve months, give or take.
Excellent. Thank you. So you just, um, brought into the next question. You said, um, one, I, I love the fact that you realized that we should not have all transient spaces, that the extended stay, that is something that is very necessary here in our community for a variety of reasons. But, um, one of my other questions, um, how would you feel about making sure that the labor stays here within the city? That we are dealing with our labors, our union is actually here, uh, but especially minority businesses in the community? That we're utilizing them and they're not just the jobs that sweep up for a day or two, but there are, those are the ones that for the life of the job.
Every hotel that we do, we go to the community for the employment base.
I'm sorry, I couldn't barely hear you. If you would push your mic up. There you go. Thank you.
Every community that we go into, we go to the immediate community for our employment base. Chris, I'm gonna defer to you because he's the one that's gotta hire everybody. And I'd like to, for you to talk a little bit about some of the policies that we've implemented in Tetra-Bilt via Millennium. And on the construction side, we are, we also wanna maintain that diversity and inclusion on the construction side. Um, but you gotta be careful about which trades. We've gotta make sure that they're, they're capable of doing the work of this type of scale. But I can tell you that that's our intent. Chris, if you don't mind.
That's pretty much the answer there is diversity is, is key. Um, we have a diversity, diverse organization. We continue to build upon that diversity. We work within the communities. A lot of our team members are from the community, um, including leaders at the properties. We work together with everybody to make sure, because, listen, in order for this hotel succeed and pull in business, like we talked about earlier, making it a destination. It's gotta be a Trentonian destination. It's gotta be made up of everybody that's here. That's what this is all about. This is all about you guys. So how do we take that and incorporate it into the hotel and create that community environment within the hotel? You talk about trying to bring events in and things like that. I mean, we, we would do, uh, grand opening events. We do all sorts of different things. Our reach, and I'm just gonna kind of go in a different direction, if you don't mind, for two seconds. Our reach out is not thirty miles, fifty miles, sixty miles. It is hundreds and hundreds of miles. It's different countries. There's international travel that comes through here. You're not getting it. We put something out here that's gonna have long-term stays, upscale suites, nice restaurant, open spaces, beautiful courtyards, great guest rooms. And great service at the end of the day, that's all delivered by you guys here in the community. It's gonna bring that travel here. It's gonna pull from New York City. It's gonna pull from Philadelphia. It's gonna pull from everywhere. Because people wanna be here, but there's nothing here today. So let's build it. Let's get it set up. Let's set a grand opening for, for next year, for two hundred and fifty year celebration, and let's take that thing the next step. So that, I'm kind of bounced around a little bit on you, um, with that. I hope I answered it.
You absolutely did, Chris. So thank you for that. I appreciate that.
And we want, we want the employees to travel of.
I'm excited to hear that.
Uh, we want, if we have a GM or a DOS or a maid service, or you pick, a bartender. If they're from the community, we want them to want to be in that facility and to have some pride. Some pride of, you know, of, of, of service. And so we want this hotel to be, um, you know, the focus of, of employment and, and that is local. Absolutely.
I forgot to mention one other thing, too. Kind of already started to work with the community a little bit. We, we've been talking with John.
Come to the mic, please.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Um, I've been, we've been talking with, um, John Arm, with the Harmon.
Oh, Harmon. John Harmon. Excellent.
Already having dialogue with him, just to understand the community, understand how we can all fit together. So we've kind of already taken that step a little bit because we wanna be prepared for us to be able to move forward.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Um, so that answers that. And you, the other one of, ones I wanted to ask you, was there anything that you had recently done? And I see the Hamilton and Alpharetta that you said you completed, that was completed in two thousand twenty-one. Um, so that's something for us to, uh, look into. And from what I've seen, it, it looks lovely. But I also like that you are, um, diversifying it. That there will be, it's not just a hotel. It's not just a place to stay, realizing that we need something more. We need a place for our entertainment here, banquet hall, um, so on and so forth, a place for when folks wanna have a wedding. We want them to be, stay here in our city or come to our city and have that place to stay. We want them to come and have a place so they can act, not just go there, but they can also have fun as well.
Experience. They need an experience.
When they walk in, the, your first impression, you, everybody knows you don't get to do it all over again. So that first impression that they get when they come to our city, we want it to be something that they wanna come back to over and over again. I think that is, um, all that I have right now, realizing that this is revitalization of our capital city. And we thank you for being here, being present and realizing the urgency that there is with, um, getting this done. And not, uh, thinking that we need to wait, wait over and over again. So thank you so very much for being out here this evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, it's good to meet you, sir. Thank you for coming. And then Chris also, uh, really appreciate that you are taking such an interest in our city. And that you see the hotel for what it is and not what it was. And that's really important. Um, so these are, I just wanna talk, I need to ask some questions. So, um, when the hotel opened, um, back in the mid-two thousands, it also was a community hub, particularly with events like First Fridays, uh, Artifacts Gala, Artifacts, rather, the, uh, restaurant, the bar area. It was kind of a place to see, be seen, but also, you know, have conversations, be able to just, you know, let your hair down and meet with Trentonians. And that's something that's been missing ever since. Uh, the Starbucks, we had a Starbucks here for a little while. I had a community room that community groups can meet at. Um, that's gone by the wayside. It also was a place, you know, kind of a, uh, mid-range between, we had a, uh, the Warman World, which is eighteen hundred seats. And unfortunately, the partnership between the hotel and the Warman World was not something that was able to be actually put together. And that was back in the days when they had the late Ray Charles coming, BB King, Willie Nelson, who would sell out, all of them would sell out the place. Uh, Harold Elefante, all of them would sell out the place.
We wanna bring that back.
I would love it. We would, you'd make a lot of money if you could. Um, so, you know, that to be said, uh, the community needs this because people have family reunions, they have, you know, weddings, funerals. It serves so many more purposes. Trenton Film Festival was a venue for the Trenton Film Festival every year. Uh, arts events, you know, there's so many things it could be. It's, I like that, uh, we were talking about is by ha, be having it, have that, the diversifying.
Yes.
But one of the things with our hotel in being a capital city and having visited other capital cities. And we're a city that should be able to easily support a Marriott or a Hampton Inn or both in different hotels, but we just don't have that size. Also, New Jersey being a smaller state, we don't have the need, uh, for our legislators to come in, you know, do their day, uh, at the state legislature and not decide it's better to drive back to Cape May that night or Bergen County or Warren County rather than to stay here. But then the hotel was able to do things like, uh, when the Trenton Thunder, uh, was still an affiliate, uh, I think at that point the Red Sox even. Uh, they booked rooms for all their players every single night. Uh, then we also had things where, uh, we had famous people even stay there, James Carville, William Sapphire, other musical artists that were playing at Princeton. For some reason, they ended up in Trenton. And, um, we really need to make sure, I think, given some of those challenges. Uh, cause also at that time, there weren't hotels in Hamilton. Ewing didn't have any hotels. So the competitive environment, you'll know that much better than I would. But just being able to make sure we place our tell, our hotel and the sweet spot it needs to be. One of the things in a lot of discussions, uh, that have come up is even lowering the number of rooms down to about a hundred. So I think you had said one seventy, so.
One seventy is where we're at right now. I mean, it's, it's right now, it's one ninety-seven.
Okay.
So, you know, the, there's a balance because if you've got a large event and you wanna capture everybody for two nights, you gotta have enough rooms. So we had a similar situation in Pittsburgh. We're still working on that deal, but it was a massive hotel and it is a huge conference center. And we, again, did the same philosophy of transient extended stay. But we had to keep enough rooms because you have to attract the events. Cause you have to have the, the bed count or the, the, the key count to accommodate those bigger events. So it is a balance and I hear you. Um, it, to your point about all the things you, you said about the music.
I'm not trying to discourage you, by the way.
No, I, we would have not, we wouldn't be here if we were discouraged. So, um, I think if you look at, for instance, the music side, Roaring Social down in Alpharetta, Georgia is a music venue. And it's amazing and it's different types of music. So it, we're not stuck on jazz. We have jazz, we have karaoke night, we have all sorts of different types of music venues that attract different people and they keep on coming back. So we actually integrate, integrate, uh, music in our pickleball. It's called the Yard. It's also, so it's a big, we're trying to promote families coming there. Not just playing pickleball, come, you know, listen to music and, you know, have food and beverage and have a good time. Um, one of the other things we did, again, Winston-Salem, Winston-Salem was a very artsy community. And what we did is we brought, we had artists display their works in different areas of the hotel. Where they, they, you know, they could sell it or at least display it, but it gives you a fresh supply of art that comes into the room. And I think that that's something we need to look into. We gotta be careful about the brand. Because the Marriotts, the Hiltons and so forth, if you do with a hard brand as opposed to a soft brand. Soft brand gives you the flexibility to kind of do what you want, kind of melds into the fabric of the community. Hard brand is this is what's gonna be in the lobby. This is what you gotta do. And those are the sort of things that we do the calculus on, like what's best. And clearly Trenton, um, this, this is, get as much of the community involved in this hotel so that you're all proud of it. And you can endorse it and promote it and so forth and so on. So again, back to the experience that we were talking about earlier. Um, I think we can create something special here. I, I know we can. It's not guesswork. I know we can.
I just have a few more questions. So to that, um, I like the idea in your distinction between soft hotel versus hard hotel. Because having a cookie cutter, you know, that could be a problem too with having your Hamptons, your Marriotts, your Holiday Inn's, Expresses and so forth. Um, but also with a hotel like this, like I recently went down to Raleigh, North Carolina, the, you know, state capital down in North Carolina. And it's been very interesting to see what they do because in some ways it's similar to Trenton. Um, and a lot of aspects, except for their, the state's a much larger state, so there's more reason for government to stay in town.
Yes.
But then you have nearby, um, the Glenwood Avenue neighborhood, which is really, really happening. But it's also done a smart job with creating rooftop restaurants and bars, something we haven't here. And actually, as far as I know, it, you know, I don't think any other town has one. Um, are you looking at also doing things like that?
I, I don't know if we can actually do the rooftop. Um, there are logistical concerns about that because you have to bring elevators, a couple of elevators to the roof. And I can't even remember what the mechanical systems are up there, but I don't know if, I, I don't think that we can do it on this hotel. However, you got a wonderful garden in the back. That garden is gonna be our focal point. And, and so that's the tact that we would take. Normally, rooftop, all in. We're doing a brand-new building Greer, South Carolina. You're thinking Greer, where's that? That's, it's a suburb of Greenville, but very similar to Alpharetta, they had a vision. It was a textile town. And they had a vision to create Greer Station. And it's a wonderful, wonderful community. They've come to us. This is a city-driven thing and we're doing a similar deal to the Hamilton, there in Greer, and we will have a rooftop. Because we see the value in that. But they're really expensive. And so you have to kind of do the, the cost analysis, cost-return analysis.
And, and that's one thing, um, that's good that you said that because the creek was something that was never utilized as an asset by the previous hotel.
And it should.
Beautiful creek and it's something that could help build the rest of the city around too.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Um, my final question, uh, would be, uh, are you going to use union labor? Was that a consideration?
I, and we've been guided on this, it's prevailing rate. We have to pay union level wages. And we factored that into the cost. The twenty-five million includes the prevailing rate in that number.
Okay. And I just wanna point out, uh, while you're here, we have, uh, the executive director, chairman, one of the board members of the Trenton Downtown Association.
I met this gentleman earlier, walking up, and I already like him.
But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be, I'll be brief. Thank you. Um, first, I wanna thank my colleagues for the great questions and comments that you made. I just wanna say thank you for coming forward. Thank you for presenting us, um, with this, this proposal and the opportunity. I did, um, while everyone else was talking, I took time to read through, to see what it is that you said here. I like the fact about creating the opportunity for our residents. You are going to reach a, um, understanding if this works out with the Patriots Theater to see what can happen with that. I am a teacher leader at Trenton Central High School, so the part about working with children and establishing a relationship, that is key and paramount to me. I do like the fact when you said about working with, well, you're gonna pay union prevailing rates, um, wages. Um, to not only employ Trenton residents when it is complete. I heard when you said about being specific, right, about the people that work on the project because we want it right, we want them skilled and licensed. So I like the ideas that the union, um, workers will be considered for, um, working on the project. That is important to me as well. Um, and then just the whole, um, thought process that you put into it and saying that you will have the people come in to survey around the town to see what it is that Trenton wants or would want to see, that is very important as well. So you've touched on key areas for me, um, and brought forth a, a wonderful vision. Um, and you put a lot of thought into it and I thank you for that because we are the capital city. And we deserve to have something that, that reflects, um, the growth and the beauty, the history and the potential of the city. So I'm excited, um, to see where all of this goes and I thank you again for your time.
All I can say is amen to that.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Um, good evening.
Good evening.
I, I just wanna say thank you to you both, uh, for your interest in the hotel and in the city of Trenton. Um, I appreciate from one history buff to another, your understanding of, of our value, um, and how that relates to this venue. So, um, that, that right there was a, a plus for me as somebody that understands, uh, our, our geographics here in the city. I do have some concerns. Um, there are, just brought to me by the public, right? So I'm on your website and I don't see any projects under Tetra-Bilt yet, but you did reference a few projects. And I do see that this was formed in two thousand four or founded in two thousand four. And I do appreciate the understanding that people.
It's actually, it's actually two thousand twenty-four.
Twenty-four. I'm sorry, two thousand twenty.
And, and we would have had a lot more projects under Tetra-Bilt. What we did is, um, I had my development company, Chris has Millennium, Phil Hugh had his company. And Brenton Lindsay, which is the contractor, has his company. And Phil and Chris and I have been working together for now three, oh, you've been working with him longer than me. But we felt as though that, how can we create a hospitality company that makes a difference? And you've gotta have these different disciplines and it, and it's really difficult to get the right fit. And that's the personalities. And, you know, we're, we're kind of cut from the same cord from a ethic standpoint and focus and so forth. And, you know, we're kind of cut from the same cord from a ethics standpoint and focus and so forth. So Tetrabill is a new company, but the, if you've got that list of projects that, that's a partial list of past. There should be an exhibit on one of the exhibits, on one of the documents, but I think we can get that to you. But we've got extensive experience in it, but it's been under different names, different development companies. Like for instance, the Hamilton Curio. I didn't know Chris at that point, didn't know Phil. I did know Phil one, I found out that Phil went to Roaring Social several times. The speakeasy without him knowing me and he goes, golly, that's awesome. And so that's, I hope that explains that it's pulling together the key people to create a company that's going to make a difference in hospitality.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. I just wanted that to be on the record.
I appreciate it.
People will look at your website and say, 2024, whoa.
They're just newbies.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, fortunately or unfortunately, I think we have 100 years of collective experience in real estate development and hospitality, so.
Nice, thank you. And I also wanted to comment that I do appreciate you explaining the differences between a third-party management company and being an operator. That's something that's very important, especially for this hotel. Just in my experiences over the last, what, 20, almost 20, yeah, about 20 years, it has been third-party management and they're the ones that drop the ball on this. When you're not vested into the property, when it's not yours, you know, you don't really have that same passion for the day-to-day operation. So I do appreciate you making that clarification. So that's definitely something I love to see. I don't have any of the references here, but I'm sure the administration will forward it to us soon. I wanted to talk about, most of my colleagues, they commented on or asked questions, basically everything that I wrote down, which was like, how do you attract all these people here? And how are you going to activate that area because downtown is so dead? So I do appreciate the answers to that.
Well, this, I think this is the catalyst to bring life to the downtown, to be honest with you.
I wholeheartedly agree.
You got to start somewhere, right? And a hotel with a good food and beverage experience and event space, we've got the makings of something that we can create something very special for the community.
Nice. And I don't want to be redundant, so I'll move on. But at any point, or is it possible for there to be a pool on the property? That's like the million-dollar question everybody asks about because it's attraction as well.
Anything's possible.
Well, it's possible, but I, but we've got to look at that garden area. We really can't put it on the roof or we can't put it on the top of the event center. And it would have to be integrated in the garden area. But what does that, does that take away from the experience of what? Because what we envision is events out there, gatherings. And, you know, sometimes when you put a pool in, it's great, but it's, sometimes it's distracting. If you've got a vision that you're trying to meet, sometimes it kind of acts bad, but.
Well, certainly, all avenues, because that's what we want to try to do here is to take everybody's thoughts, comments, what works or doesn't work, and integrate that into the hotel. That's certainly something we look at. And we want to kind of build a group.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I don't have any more questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harrison.
My question, first question was, how many capital cities? I mean, how many capitals have you done, like for, in other states?
Tallahassee, but you can't compare that Tallahassee deal to being, you know, downtown Tallahassee entirely. Did we go after some deals in Tallahassee? Absolutely, but the dynamics of some of those deals didn't make sense. It, the bottom line, it's got to come down to downtown, you've got State Capitol and you have Florida State. And then you've got FAMU. And there's a lot of hotels down there. And you've got to be able to reach that rev par, that ADR and occupancy to make it make sense. And when properties are too expensive or it's going to take too much to acquire it and then create your concept, that's when we say it's a go, you know, it's a go or no-go decision. So I'm trying to think, Raleigh, I didn't do a hotel in Raleigh, but I did the Citrix Building. So if you look at the Citrix, it's a fascinating building, but we capitalized that building and developed the Citrix deal in Raleigh. I'm just going back to other capital cities, but it's, nothing's coming to me.
Well, because I'm asking because of the history of this great city, George Washington, you, this hotel could have a comedy club. We could have the NCAA tournament for men and women. We have an arena, actually doesn't have a minor league hockey team, which I would love to see get back, which would be awesome. We have art all night, the end of this, the end of this month. So there's a lot of great things the city has. And you connecting with the hotel, with the hotel, with the arena, with the trend under, with the local community, with the history.
We agree 100% with you. That's what we want to do.
Right.
That's exactly what we want to do.
Because then they could jumpstart more redevelop.
Other developments.
Boom, 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 boom.
You can look at any city that's, that needs revival. And it takes a few buildings or projects to serve as that catalyst. I mean, Greenville, South Carolina, have you ever been there?
No.
Okay, if you were there in the 80s, you'd be going, why would I go to Greenville? Again, textile town, terrible. They started doing some renovation in 1992 to the main street down there. And they tied into the little river. I mean, it's not a river like this, it's a little tiny creek is what it is. But they started there and they built and built. If you go there today, it is the poster child for revitalization of a community. And I, I'm a believer that we can be a part of that here. And we would love to be a part of that.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you again for being present, both of you, and sharing this presentation with us. Most of my colleagues did touch on some of the things about, my questions were pretty much community input. How will you engage the community in the planning process? Most of the questions have been answered, so just thank you so much. But one other question, how many staff are we looking to have? I don't know if you answered that.
Wow, what are the employees?
For like the size of that hotel.
This is during operation, presumably. That's your question?
You're probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 to 40, give or take, maybe a little bit more.
It's going to be heavier when they have events on.
Yeah, you're going to have quite a few, quite a few event folks that'll be kind of part-time that will come in. But you'll have about a 30 to 40 full-time base in the hotel.
Hotels are major employment.
Yeah, just curious. And one other question I don't think I heard was, do you foresee, are there any challenges that you may foresee, if any, in this area? Because I know he spoke about.
Are you talking about like micro-challenges or macro?
The redevelopment project itself in this area.
We don't see any. I mean, normally when we go into a project, we're concerned about the environmental stuff. So if you go into an existing building that's been, that's been dormant for many, many years, you've got mold issues, you've got potential asbestos issues, you've got all sorts of issues that you're kind of a little unknown. When you go into a historical building, you don't know what's behind the walls.
Yeah.
I mean, it's crazy, some of the things you find. There is nothing in this building that causes us concern. From a macro perspective, I kind of go back to the point. You've got some great economic base here. We just need to create the catalyst for that revitalization.
No, I agree. Ever since the hotel closed down, you know, we saw a decline in the businesses downtown, so.
Sure.
Again, thank you so much for being present this evening.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you, thank you so much. And I really look forward to spending a lot of time in Trenton. So thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gop. See ya.
Certainly. Madam President, we reached the point of public comment for agenda items only. If I could have the clipboard for public comment for agenda items only. And to the public, public comment will be five minutes for each individual. This public comment is for items that pertain to the docket or agenda. Is there another, I'm sorry, is there another clipboard there? Is there one for docket items? I'm sorry.
Agenda items, no.
Possible, please, we've poured it up already.
No, so I see none. If that's the case, then we can.
Are there any members that are.
Are there any, anybody that wishes to comment on, public comment for docket items only?
Nope, okay, moving right along.
Seeing none, Madam President. Then we have a resolution before you for new business. That's Resolution 25-236. This is a resolution to award contract to ESBS Law Enforcement for Training Needs Assessment, Specialized Training Development, Facilitation and Delivery and Evaluation for the Trenton Police Department for a period of two years from the date of award with the option to extend for three additional one-year options.
May, we have a motion to approve 25-236.
So, second.
Roll call? I'm sorry.
Call, I'm sorry.
Is there any discussion or?
Yeah, I just, we just wanted to, if possible, possibly Director Wilson, if we could just speak to the contract as far as with the training, why did this come about? Was it because of the DOJ report? Are we, are we addressing those? I just had like two questions as well.
Hopefully it will not be police questions, but this award, the administration actually put this competitive contract out as a response to the DOJ report.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Council President?
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. So really just want to say, Director and B A Richardson, glad that you've brought this forth. I think this is really important, particularly because people are asking and wondering what's going to happen in response to the DOJ report. Even, yeah, I know that there's been training changes and things that have been happening before the report was released. So for members of the public that may not have had a chance to, you know, see this or will see it and know what it means in detail, can you just highlight maybe for a minute what the training will do for our officers and for our city, please?
Well, this, this contract basically will address three different elements. One element would be to assess the need for training. Obviously, still keeping into consideration the DOJ report. But these consultants will come and address, work with, you know, the police force and address what are the needs for training? Because it's not necessarily what the DOJ report says. We don't want to limit to that, right? Then they will design the training plan and there is a evaluation process to it as well. But this would only be successful if it's, if everybody at the police department, all the ranks of superior officers buy into this. So that is a very important part of this contract.
And so it sounds like it's everyone on the force, whether they have bars on their shoulders or not.
Yes, correct.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Council President.
I just had a question, like how are the trainings going to be scheduled, like?
These are face-to-face trainings.
So in person?
Yes.
And then how will we?
And this, I'm sorry, just need to clarify that this doesn't replace the trainings that are actually mandated. Yes, this is just, this is additional training.
And then I was going to ask, how, I see it's for two years. So then we'll be able to get reports after two years? Like how are we going to measure?
This is actually a five-years contract. It's just that it's, this is for two years and we have three options to extend for a year. And so it will depend on how the police evolves, right, with the training. So it would be basically a diagnostic process in two years. Then they will evaluate and will decide what other trainings are necessary, if necessary. But we have the option to keep this firm for five years.
That was like kind of my question, like how are we going to measure the success? How do we know if the trainings are working or not?
Yes, there is an evaluation process. As I mentioned earlier, that it was tri-fold, that it will be assessment, training and evaluation. And that it's kind of a cycle.
Okay. And will we get a periodic, like status report on, on the outcome of the trainings?
It's allowed by the law, yes.
That was it for me. No one other questions? Thank you, B A Richardson.
Thanks.
And Police Director? Oh, she left, yes.
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 Motion carried. Madam President, that brings us to the point of public comment. And first individual for public comment is Austin Edwards.
Rashida? All right, perfect. So good evening, city council members. My name is Austin Edwards and I'm proudly serving as Board Chair for the Trenton Downtown Association. And our mission is to protect the interests of the downtown stakeholders, including our downtown businesses. As you all are, I'm sure, aware, there have been ongoing and growing violent incidents that are happening downtown. Specifically, we see them during a lot of weekend and weeknight events, whether it be our first Fridays or second Fridays, which is not necessarily a bad thing that these events are happening. But we're concerned about the ongoing and growing issues. Videos that we've seen of crowds participating in fights. We've had eyewitness accounts of individuals coming with knives. People have seen guns in the crowd. This is an ongoing issue. And as we've seen, some of these issues happened specifically on the steps of Trenton City Hall. Right? Now, it's easy to say that, you know, we can point a finger at this business or that business, that they're the problem, right? They're the troublemakers. But the reports that we're getting from, to the TDA is that this isn't specifically happening due to any business negligence. In fact, a lot of businesses that are participating are doing all the things they need to do, including filling out all the proper forms, paying required fees and specifically requesting police presence at these events. Unfortunately, what we've seen is a breakdown of the police actually showing up to these events to enforce law, order and safety for everyone at the event. And it's very surprising that we're seeing this because, I mean, this isn't a surprise, right? It's summertime, people want to go out, they want to have fun. We're very surprised that there doesn't seem to be any plan whatsoever to help control these crowds, right? And we hear all the time that it's because the police are short-staffed. But again, this is something foreseeable that we knew would happen every single summer. And yes, this doesn't just happen in Trenton. This is also a statewide issue. You see at the shore, especially, there's a plethora of youth that are going out. And same thing, we're seeing a lot of violence there. But if anything, that leads itself to knowing that we need to have a plan. So we're hoping that something will change before we do suffer a horrible violent incident. We don't want a great program and great things happening in the city to turn to something violent, ending up on the front page of the Trentonian or Channel 6 and damaging our reputation, right? Tonight, we've had the presentation from hotels, right, that want to come downtown. We don't want the first thing, you know, when they're about to break ground to be, hey, there was another violent incident that happened that detracts them from being here. And we're already feeling the impact even before that. We have multiple apartment buildings that have opened up recently. And the owners of these apartment buildings have specifically reached out to us at the Downtown Association and said, as soon as we saw that video or as soon as my potential tenants saw that video of people fighting on Trenton City Hall steps and someone getting, you know, violent. on Trenton City Hall steps and someone getting, you know, violently harmed, like uh, grievously harmed, they immediately canceled any and all appointments, which has lost revenue for these businesses, lost attraction, more people we could have downtown that aren't. So, we're hoping uh, that uh, again, this doesn't get to the point where it becomes something that's out of our control, that creates more negative PR for the city, but we're hoping that the police, we're hoping that the administration, we're hoping that everyone that needs to be a part of making sure our downtown is safe actually shows up and that occurs. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tom Rust.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Tom Rust and uh, first want to thank you, Council, for allowing me to speak this evening. Uh, it pains me to have to come together tonight to address you in this matter, uh, because I am a lifelong Trentonian, uh, a huge enthusiast that always looks at things glass half full. However, you know, our board uh, believes that there, we express a, a serious concern regarding the ongoing lack of adequate security within a special improvement district. Our shared vision of a vibrant, safe downtown is being compromised by persistent public safety challenges. An analysis of the 2024 crime data provided by Trenton Police Department reveals that a concentrated two-block area from East State Street to Hanover Street, from Broad Street to Stockton accounts for approximately seventy percent, seventy-five percent of all instances reported in downtown crime. This alarming concentration demands urgent targeted action. Recent incidents of crowd fighting and fatalities only intensify the reality that a safe and health, healthy living environment in this area does not currently exist. In addition, our clean team spends a disproportionate amount of time in the area previously noted, addressing hazardous and unsanitary conditions, regularly cleaning up human feces, discarded needles, pint and airport-sized liquor bottles, and the remnants of irresponsible behavior, including scattered food, waste, and litter. These conditions not only pose serious public health risks, but also undermine the welcoming atmosphere we've worked diligently to establish. Compounding this concern during First Friday events, the contracted police presence failed to materialize. While no incidents occurred, the lack of security created an unsafe atmosphere, forcing event operators to close early out of an abundance of caution, thankfully, detracting from what should be a positive and engaging community experience. Despite the ongoing efforts of stakeholders revitalizing and reinvesting our downtown, meaningful economic growth and residential development will not occur at the pace our city desires unless safety and stability are firmly established. The district is not a field of dreams. We cannot expect progress simply by envisioning it. Public safety must be the bedrock on which revitalization is built. There is truth in the adage that a single negative experience can erase the value of a hundred positive ones. Firm believer in that. It takes extraordinary effort to rebuild trust once it has been broken. We strongly urge the Council to take immediate and decisive action to enhance security in the SID. This includes strategic collaboration, increased police presence, and substantial investment in public safety infrastructure. As we continue promoting uh, downtown as a vibrant and inclusive destination through initiatives like Downtown Fit, uh, which is a regular running group that meets on Warren and Lafayette Street, Downtown Zoom, which is a once, once a month, um, uh, in, in environment for the stakeholders of the SID to have an ongoing dialogue, Patriots' Week, which is coming up at the end of the year, and the forthcoming Revolutionary Mile that is scheduled for October sixteenth of this year. And by the way, we got an endorsement two days ago from the government to do a video to announce and participation in that event. So, we remain fully committed to work alongside Council, to hopefully build the kind of foundation that is necessary for future generation success. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Leon Onatieri?
Yes, good evening. My name is Leon Onatieri. Um, thank you guys for having me. I'm here to reiterate some of the statements that were made previously. Uh, I'm the Vice Chair of the TDA, uh, Downtown Business Owner. I'm a local DJ, and most importantly, I'm now a resident of the downtown, specifically at two-sixteen East State Street, and I have a two-year-old. Um, very thankful to see that there are plans to bring the hotel back to life. Um, you know, with the network that I have, I have a studio on Warren Street. I did expect that I'll be able to utilize this studio as a hub for major record labels. And so, bringing that hotel and improving security in the area is very important for that business model to move forward. Um, but I'd like to appeal to the police and the administration today, again, that we use the law to our advantage as opposed to as a crutch in order to curb loitering, um, explicit, uh, drug use and um, other issues that we have, okay? Um, we can rebuild the hotel with golden floors, golden bidets and everything, but nobody's gonna come if we continue to have a se- security and safety issue. So, all of this is good and well. Twenty-five, it could be a billion dollars. No one is going to come if there are bullets still flying downtown. Uh, I just want to make sure that we circle back to that portion of safety and convenience. If they're looking to do the work in a year, we have to do our job to increase the amount of safety and convenience that's happening to support things like this. Um, you know, so I, I really want to appeal again to the lease and the administration to take this very, very seriously. It's not on any single business owner. It's not on any single individual or any single member of Council or this community. It's about us coming together and creating a vision of safety and security that will help to improve this city on all boundaries and borders. That is number one. And if we don't take that very seriously, this project will never happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, those are all the individuals I have listed for public comment at this time. If it's your choice or the board's choice, you may move to civic comment.
You didn't sign the clipboard. Come on up here, Reverend. Come on up here, Reverend Taylor. Say clipboard for you to sign. No.
I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
John R. Taylor, uh, resident of Trenton, one-eleven Perry Street Pastor, also President of the Capital City Community Coalition and other businesses, uh, partnerships. Um, wasn't gonna say anything, but I have to say something because I don't want you to think I'm one of the partners that they were talking about with the hotel. We didn't have an opportunity to get our whole team in until this morning, but I'll talk about that later. I want to thank you for being proactive with trying to make sure safety is paramount in this city. And I like what the last young man said. I'm a fan of Austin because he used to be one of my members at my first church. Um, Edwards, that's his name. Um, it's a community effort, not just law enforcement, but a community effort. We push a lot of community policing. That's our idea for the community to take control over their community. But at the same time, we need law enforcement to do what they need to do. So, I'm glad to see, although this is a result of the report that came out um, from the federal government, but we also have to be fair because four or five of those things that was recommended, the sitting director was already doing. The former director, she told us that the entire department needed to be retrained. So, I'm glad to see um, that you're making the effort to do that. Uh, just like the young man, people don't think about church as a business, but one-eleven Perry Street, been there seventy years. Actually been there longer. It used to be Trinity Methodist Church before they moved and sold it to Friendship. The makeup of the community has changed. The challenge, uh, to stay here, and we will stay here, uh, is a challenge. When you have to come to church six o'clock in the morning and we have an influx, and not just our residents, but other residents, uh, since they have shut down Kensington in Philly, we have an influx of some of people that have challenging lives. Because when you're dealing with opioids and drugs and various things, that's a challenging life. And we have to do everything we can to help uh, those people. Um, so with the community, with community policing, with the s- street teams, and all of us working together, we can turn this city around. With the hotel, uh, our figure came out to about the same, so I don't have no argument with that twenty-five million because our people that walked through this morning told us the same thing. There's gonna take about twenty-five million to turn that around or less, depending on what you go about. But we're gonna come back and talk to you about that. But at first, I wasn't gonna say nothing, but I'm not gonna sit and met with the mayor several times and other people and leave the impression that we were dragging our feet. Because sometimes they made it difficult to get in that hotel just to view it. And I'm not saying that's the mayor. You all know, we had issues with the owner um, of that business. And I guess you know, those that know me, knowing I'm doing my best to talk here tonight in a dignified way, all right? So, let us do what we need to do collectively to move this city forward. It, if we want to continue to draw young families to this city, this is, but this is what's gonna save us. The people that are here, the seniors that pay tax, that have went through everything and stayed with this city. And now we have young families that want to come and developers that want to come. It's very important that all of us collectively do the job together. So, let's get busy and do that. And I say that, I never thought with preaching and pastoring, pastor three churches in this city, I'm on my third one, that I never thought that I would have to have Norcan in the church in case somebody OD. It's a different ministry now. All right?
Thank you, Reverend Taylor.
I just want to say that to you. Thank you, sir. All right? God bless you, Madam President.
Thank you, Reverend Taylor. Um, civic comment, ready for, uh, Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you very much, Council President. Uh, so I just want to say it's very profound what Pastor Taylor talked about and uh, very true. We have a lot of challenges and um, only we can save us. And I think that's, that's a, a great point. And we need to do it together. Uh, so I think tonight was, actually for a special meeting, this is a really fruitful and great informative meeting in a lot of different ways. And also want to thank uh, Tom Rust, Executive Director of Trenton Downtown Association, Austin Edwards, Chairman, and Leon Onatieri for uh, being on the board and Vice Chair to come tonight and speak about these issues. Uh, these issues have been percolating and being a problem for a very long time. It just didn't happen last weekend. It's just not one video on Facebook. I've had complaints from constituents uh, who live on that street. Yes, there actually are people living on that street and that, that particular block who have been suffering underneath this. And then we have new apartment buildings which are gonna be attractive to people. We want to see those filled. They're gonna help us build this economy, rebuild this economy in downtown and the greater city, so we're not dependent on the state of New Jersey. We're not dependent on state workers coming back, which may be a mirage that never comes reality. So, with that all being said, I just want to um, thank everyone for tonight's meeting. I was glad to see this presentation, glad to see the greater discussion about what happens with this hotel. Um, also want to extend uh, my condolences to the Trenton Police Department Police Director Wilson for Officer Timothy Long's passing, tragic. Um, he was a very, very good, um, good officer, a good man. You can see the pride that he had in our city, the pride he had in our police department, and certainly the pride he had in serving us, uh, in the Honor Guard and every other way, and also additionally, in the United States Marine Corps. Um, that said, just have one quick announcement. Uh, tomorrow could actually, uh, on criminal uh, police issues and community issues, we have our North Ward City Police Advisory Council meeting at five-thirty to seven PM at Galilee Baptist Church, four-forty Martin Luther King Boulevard. Please come and attend. It's always a great discussion. You get one-on-one time, but also we get to further build the bonds of connection within the North Ward and the other parts of the city because other folks from, uh, other wards tend to show up once in a while. And we really want to have this robust discussion. We need it going forward. So, thank you again. Uh, everybody be safe and uh, stay cool in this heatwave and God bless.
Councilwoman Harrison?
I would like to give my condolences too, to uh, Officer Long. Um, what a wonderful human being. Everybody knew him, always said wonderful things about him. He touched everybody um, by being just a genuinely good-hearted human being. It's sad to see, you know, of his passing. Um, but if you all want to learn something, we could have learned it from him. What a wonderful human being. Um, tonight, thank you for this uh, great proposal tonight. Uh, thank you for the community coming out and speaking about their concerns. Um, also remind everybody, the end of this month, uh, the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth is Art All Night. Please come out and support it at the Women Memorial Building. Um, and if you can, go on there and volunteer. So, um, thank you so much. Have a blessed evening.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Thank you, Madam President. So, again, I want to just reiterate, um, we mourn with the men and women in blue, um, over the la- loss of the life of Officer Long, twenty-five years on the force in our community. He was an honorable man, a good man. And we, um, this is an absolute tragedy for our city, so our hearts are with you and we are mourning with you. Um, to Mr. Austin Edwards, um, Tom, and to um, Leon, um, you got, your voices are heard. We are residents as well as electeds, and we want our city to prosper. Uh, what we witnessed, um, what was, what transferred, transpired on this past weekend, um, should never have happened. Um, whether it was on the steps of City Hall or anywhere else in our community, our community deserves better. We have been moving in such a great direction, and that does take a step back. We want folks to want to see how we're, well we're doing. And optimism is, it, it says a lot, it does a lot. Uh, I am heart- disheartened to hear that there were this, potential business that was coming in hand that they turned about because of this um, act of violence. Um, we do have to work out, figure out that, and, and let me be very clear. Um, from the moment that we saw that video, though we have been trying throughout the years to get things um, tightened, I have been working, I know personally, with other co- um, council members and driving, I know my city clerk absolutely crazy because I've been emailing, calling, emailing, calling, and we have been very proactive in this um, situation, trying to see what we can do to make sure that this is rectified, to see whether it is not um, repeat itself. So, please know that we are not sitting idle. We are absolutely um, moving, but we have to do things strategically and we have to do them in decency and in order. But we are absolutely, this is an urgent matter for all of us up here. Um, and the families, the residents that are there, they, I mean, it, the businesses, we don't, we want to see you drive. We do not want this to be a thorn that makes your business decline. And we want our residents to want to freely come out as well. Uh, so we're not pointing fingers, but we are um, taking this very seriously. Pastor Taylor, thank you for always coming out and um, just being your authentic self and talking about what is going on in the business. Thank you for the clarification. Um, because I don't want folk, I don't want to feel like people are taking us for granted and that they're dragging their feet on that. So, thank you for that. Um, I, I think it was horrific that people, so many people were standing around on this weekend and taking videos instead of taking care of, um, and just being, one, taken care of. and taking videos instead of taking care of, and just being, one, taking, it just eggs people on, I think, when people see that, and it just does not help the situation. So I just wanted to say that. One last thing, my West Ward Community Conversation will be this, not this, but on July 8th at 5:30, for those who are in the West Ward or who otherwise come, otherwise, 600 artists in the street and the corner of Hermitage. We will be there having a variety of discussions, so we invite you to come out. Again, I wanted to thank those who came out this evening for the hotel, your inquiry, we appreciate that, and we are excited about getting this project started and hearing who else is interested. A portion of our city's mission statement is recognizing that the people of Trenton has made, has made, have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility, to seek excellence in the city's operations, and to serve all the city's people with respect and compassion. I wish you all well. Please be vigilant. It is hot, be safe, be cool as you are moving about. Check on your loved one, check on our elderly, check on your pets. All of them, our young people, make sure that they are hydrated and that they are safe. Thank you for being out here and at home safely.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council Vice President Edwards?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I want to give my condolences on the passing of Officer Timothy Long. He, he was such a great person. I met him about three years ago in one of the most funniest ways, and ever since then, we have had nothing but excellent conversations about the well-being of the city, about things that we wish we were better, like the Ninth Grade Academy being on Perry Street and how dangerous it was for the kids to cross the street there. And that's how I met him, because I crossed the street without him, not knowing that he was helping the students pass. I was picking up my daughter from school, and he was trying to wrangle up a huge crowd of kids, and his back was to me, so he didn't see me. So when the streets were clear, I crossed, and when he turned around across the kids, I was almost across the street, and I must have gave him a heart attack, because he was like, what are you doing? You were supposed to wait for me. And I'm, and being confused, I'm like, you know, I didn't know I had to be cross. He was like, you could have gotten hit, and then how am I going to explain that to your parents? And I'm like, I am a parent. He thought I was a child, he thought I was one of the high schoolers. And so it was the funniest thing, and I was running for office at the time, so we talked about, you know, just bringing the attention to the Board of Education about it, trying to get crossing guards, the shortages of crossing guards, you name it. He was in tune with the issues of the city, and he really cared, and that was my experiences with him throughout the years, and it was just, every time we saw each other, we giggled because that very first time we met was so hilarious. So it was very, very shocking to me to hear of his passing so unexpectedly. So my condolences are with his family, with the police department, and the entire city of Trenton, because we definitely lost a good one. Want to say thank you to all those who came out about the hotel. It was great to hear of the plans. I would love to entertain the conversation even further and to hear from the other proposals that are coming down the pike. I know that this process was very difficult with the owner. That was definitely foreseen, given all of the past experiences that former, that other people had with trying to buy the properties before the city even got involved. So we definitely sympathize that this was a long, drawn-out process and unnecessary in so many ways. So I know that you guys are trying to do things in a timely manner, but there were some things in the way. So like you heard, most of the comments up here today by our colleagues of whether we're going to set a deadline or not, we're definitely keeping in mind that there were some circumstances that were outside of your control that hindered the timely submission of the proposal, so hopefully we'll be able to hear that from you soon. And Pastor Taylor, thank you, because I, of course, had no idea who the other proposal was, so I'm glad to see that it's someone local at least involved in it. So that's, that's very refreshing. Lastly, about what's going on downtown. What's going on downtown in the evenings and in the daytime, but particularly in the evenings, is definitely not new occurrences that has been going on for a few months. And every single council member up here has expressed concerns about what's been going on and have been asking questions about what it is the administration is going to do, and we are very aware that there are some things that are happening, and there are some things preventing their, preventing them from doing more than what they have been doing, I'll put it like that. But there are some things that I would like to suggest that would, that does not entail any type of legislative changes or anything like that, which is, you know, we have to get involved and prevent that crowd from even forming in the first place. If we have to barricade off the street and put officers out there, then we need to do that, because someone was already murdered. People were shot, people were stabbed, there's fights every weekend on the steps of City Hall, in front of City Hall, all up and down between the 200 and 300 blocks of East State Street. And I think that the efforts could be greater, even though I appreciate the efforts that have been made to the date, there are certain things that we can do that can mitigate the situation without waiting on legislative changes or anything that's prohibiting the administration from getting involved legislatively. So those are my comments. We have reached out to the administration, and we're looking forward to continuing these conversations. I'm hoping that we see some preventative measures going forward. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Council Vice President. I'm going to be very brief. Thank you, everyone, for being present this evening. My condolences to Officer Long. I have a couple of stories about Officer Long, but I won't tell him. He's definitely a sweetheart and will be missed. Thank you to those who presented on the hotel. As we all know, the hotel is probably the main focal point that will drive business here in the city of Trenton, so I'm thankful that there are some people who are expressing interest in redeveloping that area, especially knowing the cost that it would take to make this come to fruition. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you, Reverend Taylor, for expressing what you just shared with us. I was aware that someone had asked me about the meeting today and said that they had also submitted proposals or, you know, were interested and didn't know about this meeting, so that's why I wanted to be fair and that we hear everyone prior to us making a decision. So thank you for sharing that with us. To all of those who share the concerns, my colleagues just stated it, we, please don't think that we are not, not concerned about what is going on. There's a lot of questions, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of solutions being thrown around, we are on the admin about what to do. I would like to, you know, publicly state that one of the suggestions that were made is we do need more police presence. I don't, I know there's, we're short manpower, but there's other resources. We have partnerships that we have with certain other entities, and I just really think that we should do a better job at utilizing that partnership so that we can get more manpower in specific areas, especially when we know that things are happening kind of consistently, and we don't want to wait for another tragic event before we want to step up. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you all for being present, and good night.
Madam President, there's nothing additional. I believe we've at the point where you can ask for a motion to adjourn.
Maybe we have a motion to adjourn.
Some second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison? Councilwoman Williams? Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried.